It's an education based in quantum physics. The theory combines the works of both Einstein and Newton. Unified Field Theory blends math and science to give insight into the very basis of our existence.
It turned out that people found mathematics to be one route. As you know, mathematics is a language. You know, it's a language of science. It's a language of everything.
Oyebu spent some time in Gainesville visiting with his family. He says he had been working on the theory for the past 35 years.
Wow. That's a lot of work.
Very impressive. That's all of our time. Thanks for joining us. Have a great day.
We'll see you later. Well, he's a nominee for the Nobel Prize in Physics and he lives right here on Long Island. Professor Gabriel Aiebo can claim many accomplishments, but what got him nominated for the Nobel Prize is his theory of everything.
Dr. Gabriel Aiebo has answers to the questions that puzzled Einstein right up until his death. He has unified the theories of electromagnetic force and gravity while incorporating quantum physics. But if you look beyond first glance, you see Dr. Aiebo's breakthrough is far more than numbers and equations.
Ultimately, the unification of forces deals with the story of creation and the almighty God. That basically tells the origin of where we come from.
In unifying the two theories of force, Dr. Aiebo believes he has unified everything in the universe, all of existence, from the physical to the spiritual. Everything comes from one single source.
The universe, as you see it, is a force field. The universe being a force field then means that particles or things that you see are just concentrations of those that field.
Through his work, Aiebo says the scientific explanation of creation and the religious explanation are proven one in the same.
In the beginning, the universe was a wave field. A wave field is the same thing as the word of God because the word of God is also a wave. Sound wave.
It all sounds pretty amazing, while scientists around the world think so too. Dr. Aiebo has been nominated for the Nobel Prize in Physics, a lifetime of work ending in ultimate success.
It's a spiritual journey that started basically from elementary school more or less, but eventually got properly in place by high school.
Dr. Aiebo spent 30 years working on his Unified Field Theory and his journey is far from over. Aiebo's mission now is to share his discoveries with society, not just scientists, but everyday people, to help make the world a better place. Carolyn Costello, News 55.
We're going to meet a Dix Hills resident with some ties to Albert Einstein.
How about that, huh? And now this Nobel Prize nominated physics professor is opening new frontiers for all of us. The amazing story coming up on News 12 Long Island.
First though, how about today's installment of Alan Orin's Names of Long Island, a joint project we're doing with Newsday. What's in the name Hail Site, the community with 25... Welcome back to News 12 Long Island. We're going to salute a very talented Long Islander right now, Dr. Gabriel Aiebo of Dix Hills revising Einstein's famous theory of relativity and his new calculations has earned him a Nobel Prize nomination for Physics this year. We are very pleased to have Dr. Aiebo with us. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much, Doc.
All right. Science was my weakest subject by far, okay? So for me and the viewers out there, let's keep it nice and plain and simple. What exactly did you research?
Well, is the answer to the question, is it the Big Bang Theory that the universe came into existence or the word of God, you know, which the scriptures says created the universe? And so Albert Einstein was preoccupied with how to find a solution and he died in the process trying to find a solution. And so therefore people recognized that that must be an interesting problem. So everybody jumped on the bandwagon trying to find a solution. And what has happened is that we were able to be blessed by the almighty God with a solution to that problem after studying his work for 35 years. You know, and basically what we found was that the account given by the science, which is a Big Bang Theory, I have a common denominator in a wave theory.
A wave theory.
Yes, because the Big Bang has a wave connotation to it in terms of the sound and explosion. And then the word of God is also a wave because that's a sound wave. So basically the scriptures and science are speaking the same language.
Hmm, interesting.
Yes.
So the theory of relativity, of course, just explain that.
Yeah, the theory of relativity, you know, was on its way to answering the total question. And it dealt with the gravity, which is a major part of this force field. There are four of them that are known currently, gravity, electromagnetic, strong and the weak forces, okay? The theory of relativity actually deals with the gravity component. Maxwell had dealt with electromagnetic. The strong and the weak has been puzzling everybody. So they want all those four combined and what the equation did was to combine not just those four, but others that may not have been found yet.
And not to interrupt you, but you can see on the screen there the graphs that you put together.
Exactly. The graph that you're seeing there is the unification of the four force fields that are known as well as those that have not been known yet. We were able to show that Maxwell and Einstein as well as Newton have one curve describing, which is the first curve to the right there. It shows a force field that has a center right to the left, the beginning, what's called the origin. That's where the source of the force field that moves the universe is located. And from there, as you move away, you can see the force is coming down, meaning that it's diminishing, which is expected like a ripple if you throw it, you know, it goes. So then the first one is electromagnetic as well as the gravity, which is what Einstein wanted to unify. And then in the middle was your power estimate of the strong force field because we needed that enough to build a bomb in the 30s and the 40s. So, but they didn't have it however, he made an estimate. We reproduced that in our solutions as well as give the actual correct result for the strong force field, which is given, has a proper range to it. And then the one that's most elusive, which is the weak force field. And humanity needs to be concerned about the weak force field because neutrino is the source of basically cancer that we all have. Yes, yes, it permeates through, you know, tons of light. If you pile light, this thing goes through it, you know, that means our bones and everything else has, was no obstruction to this particular thing at all. But the force field has been very elusive. We found that one as well.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Aiebo, for time purposes, we have to end there. You win the Nobel Prize, come back and we'll chat and we'll give you a lot more time. When will the awards be announced, by the way?
That should be in October sometime.
In October. All right. We hope to see you back. Congratulations, by the way. What we're presenting Long Island very proud.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Folks, please stay with us. We're going to check out the science of weather in a moment. A very nice forecast for you straight ahead here on News 12 Long Island.
D-9, second.
All those in favor moving D-9 to the floor, say aye. Aye. Suppose they know, D-9 is on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Aiebo and, pardon me? Dr. Phillips?
Dr. Roy Phillips?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. Lieutenant, I'm so proud to be here. Today we have a special guest that we've sought from Miami to interact with students in our schools. Our guest is a special person with outstanding work in the field of mathematics, mathematics, physics, aeronautics. Meet Dr. Gabriel Aiebo. Dr. Aiebo is a Nigerian-born young man who came to the United States after getting his education in the schools of Nigeria. This young man has distinguished himself in being a class with great sciences in our He studied and received his PhD in aeronautics and mathematics from the Renaissance Lea Polytechnic Institute in Troy, New York, where he worked with NASA and gained international reputation for the work in mathematical physics, fluid dynamics, and aeronautics. He made many outstanding contributions in that area in aircraft wing design and other significant contributions in that field. However, his most outstanding work is published in this book called The Grand Unified Theorem. His work has united Newton's universal gravitation and Maxwell's electromagnetic force field with Einstein's general relativity and his unified force theories. Results of his work has brought together a nomination of him for the Nobel Prize in Mathematical Physics. His work is very voluminous work. I want to thank Dr. Ingram for allowing him to go around to our schools and to speak to the students about his great work. He has verified the theories of Dr. Einstein and taken it to another level. And his work is found in this great book, The Grand Unified Theorem. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring him forward to have him speak to you briefly about his work, Dr. Aiebo.
It's a pleasure to be here. I've been asked to come and interact with youngsters in your school area and so far it's been a pleasure to interact with those youngsters. My history on a brief note started in a high school similar to what you have here. At school called St. Augustine, I was caught making noise and as a punishment, I was asked to add numbers from 1 to n. And the first week I did that, I sweated because the number, the last number was large. The next week they caught me again and they gave me the same punishment except the n number was larger. By the third week of the same punishment, I developed a formula to ease my pain. And the formula was if n was the last number, I would divide that by 2, then multiply by n plus 1. And so it allowed me to do the punishment, of course. With that successfully done and proven mathematically, my discipline teacher stopped the punishment because it made possible for me to give the answer right quick. Then, of course, he called me to the office and said to me, "Do you realize what you've done?" And I said, "Well, I've just found a shortcut to your punishment." But he said, "No, beyond that." And I said, "No." He said, "Do you, does the name Gauss mean anything to you, G-A-U-S-S?" And I said, "No." He said, "Well, he along with Newton and Euler are considered the most famous mathematicians of all time and that Gauss came into that fame by developing the same formula." So I asked him for a book on Gauss, which he gave to me and I read and it was like he said. Then I went further and I read more about Newton and I read more about Albert Einstein. That's where I got started. I was already doing fairly well in geometry. As a matter of fact, they coined a name for me eventually after that formula development, calculus, by my colleagues. But I was very interested in geometry. I love proofs. So when I discovered that relativity was geometry, it was fun. Then I also found out that E equals mc squared came out of that geometry of transformation. It was fascinating. I also learned that Einstein's colleague Henrik Lorenz was the second person to get a Nobel Prize in Physics. He was also a geometry type. I was fascinated. Then, of course, Albert Einstein would go to relativity theory, general relativity theory to figure out the gravitational force that keeps the planet's in motion. And he was on his way to actually formulating the unification of all the forces of the universe and but stopped because he passed on in 1955 and left the problem uncompleted. So I made a vow to pursue the finding of a solution to that problem, but he left a hint that helped me. That hint was, he said, "You know, this problem is pretty difficult, but I believe in my guts as I'm passing on to see my Creator that the solution lies in geometry." So I went over my geometry and searched and searched and eventually the solution came up and we published that with American Society Reviews and the rest of the world. And we were fortunate to have been nominated for a Nobel Prize in Physics, Mathematical Physics, but I've been on the road ever since then, you know, trying to talk to youngsters like the ones that I'm talking to over here. So that's basically my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair and to our board and to our audience, we, as a preamble to just our saluting this great work, I was reminded and I had the opportunity to present him with a staff that says Galileo. And I chose Galileo because Aristotle had a philosophy much like Einstein and in his philosophy, he said that weight taken up in a drop from a height, one weigh five pounds and another weigh 10 pounds will hit the ground at different times. And Galileo took a look at that and said, "No, no, I find that that is not the reality." And Galileo called all of the learned minds together and put them at the base of the tower and dropped the weights, both 1.5 and 1.10 pounds, and they hit the ground at the same time. And all of the learned men saw this phenomenon, but they dismissed out of hand their own views, their own recognition of the information and continued to support Aristotle's theory. Well, Dr. Aiebo has blown Einstein, not built on Einstein, not blown out of the water, but built on Einstein's theory. And we thought it important that our children would see an individual who challenged the process. And I don't know about you, but when I heard of Einstein, it was like somebody you could never touch, you know? In reality, he has touched him and carried the formula even further. So Mrs. Truesdale and Mr. Cavalli, if you would come forward as well because they understood after we made the review to them and maneuvered the process so that we could have him come and speak to our children. And I don't want to ignore their effort. I don't want to ignore the fact too that Airborne Nowell gave me the insight to call him forward. So the Board, School Board of Miami-Dade County, whereas the Gulfstream, wait a minute, what am I doing? I got the wrong one.
One minute.
Well, while they're getting to the right one, as Dr. Phillips mentioned, this is the Grand Unified Theorem formulation of the United Field Theory or the Theory of Everything. And if you have an opportunity, this will be in our library and you can come forward and pick it up and read it. Ah, thank you. Well, yeah, this must sure look different than the one I have, anyway. Whereas Dr. Gabriel Aiebo is a renowned scientist, mathematician, and nominee for the 2002 Nobel Prize in Physics. And whereas Dr. Aiebo will visit Miami-Dade County, or is visiting Miami-Dade County's public schools October 21st through the 24th to share with the students, the teachers and others, his scientific expertise. And whereas Dr. Gabriel Aiebo has distinguished himself by developing the Grand Unified Theorem, commonly referred to as the Theory of Everything, which has been affirmed by the scientific community as a revision and an extension of the similar works of Albert Einstein and Isaac Newton's theory of relativity and the gravitational force. And whereas the visit of Dr. Gabriel Aiebo has distinguished scholar, an African-American role model, to schools in Miami-Dade County and particularly those with the Title I program will serve as an inspiration to students. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Miami-Dade County, Florida approved Resolution Number 0240 of the School Board of Miami-Dade County honoring Dr. Gabriel A. Aiebo for his visit and educational contributions to Miami-Dade County Public Schools presented this 23rd day of October 2002, giving our students the word signed by our chair, Mrs. Pearl Esteban Harris-Hatman, and our superintendent, the merits, to a great man for a great work. One more. Come on. I just want to make it known that while we were having lunch earlier, Dr. Perez was there and she was indicating, and I would agree, that I never thought I would meet a Nobel nominee up close and personal, but we've met him and we're allowing our children to meet him as well, thanks to our illustrious school board and our superintendent. God bless you, Dr.
Thank you. I have also the speakers.
Our beloved brothers and sisters, greetings to you. My name is Brother Ralph, a member of the staff at OFOPIT Institute of Technology. The institute is located at 205 Seamen Neck Road, Dix Hills, New York, zip 11746. So it's right here on Long Island. The telephone number there is area code 6312423069. Our website is www.giocities.com/igala1. Igala is spelled I-G-A-L-A and the 1 is the digit 1, not the word 1. OFOPIT stands for Organization for African People's Participation in Technology. OFOPIT Institute of Technology is the official home of Ga-Gut. It's spelled G-A-G-U-T. Ga-Gut stands for God Almighty's Grand Unified Theorem of Mathematical Physics and beyond current mathematical physics. Okay. As indicated before, it is a theorem, not a theory. What do you mean by a theorem? Well, a theorem is something, a process that has risen to the level of a mathematical proof. That is, a theorem provides a mathematical basis, in this instance, for a grand unified field, to use the term in the usual sense, theory or the theory of everything. What do you mean by the theory of everything? We mean that the present physical cosmos in which we function is driven by essentially four different types of motion. The motion generated by gravity, the motion generated by electromagnetism, and at the subatomic level, the motion of the forces called strong and weak, as was a bit earlier indicated. The Western world, Western science has been on a quest, at least from the time of Newton actually, according to before then, to get at the Grand Unified Theorem. Why? Because therein, once in hand, is enormous extraordinary power to the people to whom such a theorem comes. Why? Because if you look at gravity, if you look at electromagnetism, strong and weak, there is no motion as indicated that cannot be explained through one of those four. And therein was the great challenge. The Caucasians knew that there were four presently known, but they didn't know how to combine them and make it grand unified. They put their best on it. It's the one purported to be the best, Albert Einstein. He built on the work, of course, of Newton relating to gravity or mechanics or motion and he built or related to the work in electromagnetism of someone named Maxwell, Clark Maxwell. So some progress was made regarding gravity and some progress was made regarding electromagnetism. At a subsequent point, some work was done at the subatomic level, which is these days called quantum theory. Some calculations were done, different candidates were put forward such as string theory and other approaches, but still it was separated out. Einstein went to his grave unable to achieve the bringing together of the four forces. That is, the capacity to articulate one force in terms of the balancing of the three, which gives you, shall we say, a lot of space to maneuver in the physical cosmos. So now we have the Grand Unified Theorem come through us to an extraordinary person in the history of science and in the history of we as an African people. At the same time, it can sensibly be asked, as Minister Brown kind of indicated earlier, okay, if we say you have grand unified in street politics, so what? Meaning, what can you do with it? Good question, good scientific question. And in the tradition of questions, allowing me to ask a few. How many folks here with us this afternoon going to evening had breakfast this morning? Or if not breakfast, lunch, dinner, ate today? Okay, we got a winning question. Almost everyone here has. That is, in some way, we ingested some energy, some food. And if we did it in the traditional American way, we may have had some Calox cornflakes or post raisin bread or General Mills Cheerios. The point is that if we had food in America, there's an excellent chance that that food came to us from some of the agricultural giants, as was just indicated, or perhaps ADM, Arthur Daniel's Midler, one of the top processors of food in the planet. And how do they get to have food in such quantity and process it with such precision that they feed the world, including us at this one? Well, they have a highly developed capacity to do what is called modeling, a technology of building something with mathematical specificity and precision from which you can do something else. So if you had, I don't know what the actual numbers are, say, an acre of corn that prior to modeling gave you 5,000 bushels, post-modeling perhaps? Be modest and say 20,000 bushels of mathematical physics, what? A force multiplied 5,000 to 20,000. How many folks with us here in this gathering drove themselves here or came by a train? How many folks with us here in this gathering drove themselves here or came by a train? Okay, let's say you drove yourself here in a product made by Ford, or Chrysler, or General Motors, or Nissan, and say your particular car has 200 horsepower. What is that teaching us? Well, that's 200 times 1 horsepower. If your ancestors come to a gathering 100 years ago using 1 horse, now you come today with 200 horses in a little box, perhaps 4 feet by 3 feet by 2 feet, what are you driving down the street? You're driving living, breathing modeling, technology, mathematical physics applied against a force multiplier, in this instance, 200 times. So that's transportation. How many folks in here have a cell phone? How many folks in here have a regular landline phone at home? That's about everybody. So that if you take your natural voice, perhaps you could be heard clearly a block away, maybe two blocks away. If two, if eight blocks equal a mile, we'll call it a quarter of a mile, and on the weekend, perhaps without even calling directly, you can with a cell phone call to, say, LA, 3,000 miles away. That, again, is a force multiplier to the power of modeling, 12,000 times in that particular instance. With Ga-Gut, God Almighty's Grand Unified Theorem, we go to another level. The examples just mentioned, and there are thousands, millions of more examples, all fall out of but two values inside of Ga-Gut, in which there are contained plus and minus infinity value generating capability. Means you can start on the minus side and go to minus 1 to minus infinity, meaning never stop that iteration. You could go from plus 1 out that way, never stop the positive iteration. Two of those values pick up the whole, in its essence, of Einstein, Newton, and Maxwell's work, and some of the work Schrödinger in quantum mechanics, whereas Ga-Gut, to repeat, gives us plus and minus infinity. So that's something of the so what of Ga-Gut. We are walking around in a world of modeling. What has been gifted to us now from Almighty God is the capacity to build a new world of supreme modeling, which brings with it then all the products, the economic and financial gains inherent of the supremacy of modeling capabilities, as something of Ga-Gut, as has perhaps been somewhat indicated. When you have a unified field, the particular physical objects therein functionally are concentrations in a field, which distinguishes that perception from that of Newton, who, to put it roughly, saw things as billiard ball, sharp edges stop and start, rather than concentrations in a field. We have present with us this afternoon, as has already been indicated, an extraordinary concentration in the field. This concentration is a human being, a black man, an original man, an African. This extraordinary concentration in the field is a continental African, specifically from Nigeria, a wonderful place that I have been fortunate to visit. This extraordinary concentration in the field, as has already been indicated, was trained by the elders in the continent within Nigeria, and also received extraordinary training here in what is called the United States of America, specifically receiving a PhD in aeronautics and mathematics from Rensselaer Polytech Institute, one of the top such institutes here within the United States, located in Troy, New York. This extraordinary concentration in the field then went on to do stellar work in numerous mathematical fields, such as aeronautics, astronautics, mechanical engineering, within aeronautics, the wing design, worked for NASA, associated with Boeing. In fact, in one year, this individual had more published work in a particular aeronautics journal than any combination of black or white scientists put together. And the folks who published it knew he was black and from Nigeria, but his stuff was so good, they just had to put it in there. This brother's work has been reviewed by the American Mathematical Society, and also the European Mathematical Society, which can be viewed in combination as something like the Supreme Court of Western Mathematical Thought. You can be a brilliant mathematician, a very talented mathematician, you can be a white mathematician and never get into AMF. Whereas the work of Ga-Gut is in there and taking up plenty of space, as was indicated, they got their best together, and after they did their best to find flaw in it, they found it more prudent to bow. So that this recognition has been given, and the practical point now is for us, we black folks, we African folks, to stand in witness to this work and begin the process of its application within our lives. So on that immediate practical point, we invite you to call us at Ofopit Institute, to visit with us at the website, and also to participate in a pledge campaign that we have that we will tell you about more at a later point. So that this brother, and of course, I'm referring to the brother to my immediate rights, is the founder of Ofopit Institute of Technology. He is the chairman of the Department of Mathematics at Ofopit. He is a professor in mathematics and mathematical physics at the University of Bridgeport, Bridgeport, Connecticut, and he is also a brother whom I think we can mention has a good appreciation of James Brown. I present to you, please now, help me in bringing forth before us with a warm and hearty and hope of us, Professor Gabriel A. Aibou, discoverer by force of the Almighty God of the Grand Unified Theorem of Mathematical Physics and Beyond.
Ga-Gut. What I'd like to talk with you today about Professor Aibou is the necessity for building a support mechanism, system under Ga-Gut, and we want to look at churches, the black church, because that's an institution which has the capacity and the ability to fund and build the Institute of Ga-Gut. Why should churches support Ga-Gut? What do they get out of it?
Yes, well, the reason has a historical dimension, obviously. From the time of our, of the African, ancient Africans, there were, was a select group that comes from an African, ancient African community that is paid purely to think and do research. In other words, their time is allocated to purely thinking and doing research to develop philosophies that will guide the society. That's their job. Now, then, in the process, they were able to develop these philosophies, part of which resulted in religious belief system and philosophies, okay? That then in turn became like a division of label, within the division of label concept, became a department of its own, which is philosophies, religious, you know, philosophies and religious practices. They then took upon themselves to organize learning and thinking and philosophical development. Organize it, meaning that they would have funding, not only for the individuals to do the thinking and research of philosophies, but to build schools where everybody else can be educated, not, you know, who may not necessarily be experts, all right? This was going on, and of course, the religious component developed into churches, you know, or mosques or temples, right? And so the schools developed by these thinkers, or these thinkers themselves, would start developing their institutions right from the basement of this worshiping places, simply because the worship places have collection, money that they will collect among the people that worship in that center, okay? They will contribute money, so they have money, they could put up a temple, okay? Now, the thinkers don't necessarily have, you know, their own source of money, so therefore they would start in the basement of the temples, okay? And they will gather there, they will learn, usually they start, they will start from the religious thing, which is like a Sunday class or something like, like Sunday school, and build up on that and diversify into something that may not ordinarily be considered religious, okay? But it's a thinking process, it's a research, you know, it's an extension of the religious, if you will, religious in the philosophies, okay, into maybe a more practical kind of situation. So they would do stuff like that. So that's what our ancestors did, okay? You know, you know, they build the universities in the process, okay? Now, and the learning centers, okay, when you hear about Pythagoras, okay, grew up in ancient Canaan, okay, and learned mathematics there, he was a citizen of Egypt, okay, of Canaan, okay, and learned mathematics there, you know, yes, you know, he was a citizen, okay? It was, and he went to school there. In fact, the first Greek mathematician, you know, that went to establish mathematics in Greece, studied in Canaan, okay? I can't think of his name right now, but he studied in Canaan.
Pythagoras?
No, not Pythagoras, it was, no, it was before those, Anaxorax, 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 I think that was the name, Anaxorax, okay? Now, he studied and then went to establish mathematics in Greece. Now, while he was establishing, you know, in Greece, he would teach his students to the level that he had learned from Canaan, from Egypt, and when they would ask him, "We want to learn more," and then he would tell them, "Well, that's as much as I can teach you. If you want to learn more, you got to go to Egypt." That's Anaxorax, Anaxorax, okay, that was the name, anyway. But where they were going in Egypt was basically in the temples and buildings that came from the temples, which are equivalent of the churches and the mosques. So there was no question that that is your question, I'm trying to give a historical component to your, answering your question now. Now, fast forward a little bit to the European, you know, appearance on the scene of learning, of philosophical development, and higher education. You take Cambridge, for example, okay? Cambridge came into prominence primarily because of Newton in the 1600s.
Yeah.
All right. Most people know a lot about Newton, but they didn't know that Newton was an ordained minister of the Church of England, simply because, well, the central location of Cambridge to begin with is called Trinity College, or one of the central locations, they call Trinity College, Trinity College. Now, Trinity College basically is a name from the Bible, Trinity, the Holy Trinity, okay, that's where that is, okay? So you can say that Cambridge is like, they started from a basement of the Church of England, because the most central, one of the central portion of it is called Trinity College. That means it's a name from the church, all right? Now, Newton, like I said, eventually became Reverend Newton, Reverend Sir Isaac Newton, but, but most people don't understand the Reverend part. The Reverend part came in as a result of the establishment of his cheer, what you ordinarily know as Newton cheer, but which in reality is called Lucasian professorship in Cambridge, Lucasian, okay? And Lucasian, if I can, you know, get a piece of chalk, you know, Lucasian professor, in other words, Cambridge University, Cambridge, okay, university, okay? Has a central part called the Trinity College, okay? Right? That's one of the central parts. That's where Newton was, okay, Isaac Newton. And you heard about Sir Isaac Newton, what you haven't heard was, he was a reverend, Sir Isaac Newton, because he was an ordained minister, ordained, ordained minister, minister of the Church of England, okay? Okay, of England, okay? All right? That's how it was, and he became an ordained minister, okay, of the Church of England because of, because of the Newton cheer, what you call Newton cheer in Cambridge, okay? Okay? Now, first, before I go further, Trinity College came from the church, okay? Came from the church, that's a name from the Bible, okay? So, so that, which establishes in the fact that Cambridge, the very central part of Cambridge started as a church affiliate, so you can say that it could have started from a church basement or a Sunday school, all right? Now, and of course, eventually, one of the most famous names of, to come out of Cambridge, Sir Isaac Newton, was an ordained minister of the Church of England, and he had to be ordained minister because of the Newton's cheer, okay? Newton, you know it as Newton cheer, but in reality, it's called Lucasian, okay? Look, actually, Lucasian, Lucasian professorship, okay, or Lucasian cheer, okay? That's the real name, Lucasian cheer. Today you call it Newton cheer, okay, but it's actually called Lucasian cheer. But Lucasian cheer was established, okay, established and funded, okay? Established and funded by a Reverend Lucas, Reverend Lucas, Reverend Lucas. Reverend Lucas of the Church, a prominent, uh, minister, prominent minister of, prominent minister, okay, of the C of E, okay, C of E, that's Church of England, okay? Church of England, the Reverend Lucas, alright? Therefore, what am I saying? What I'm saying in effect is that Cambridge in the European world is the best university, or certainly among the very top universities. That started from the church. Oxford is not different. Harvard is not different. Harvard used to be a divinity college, so is Yale. Princeton and all these others have a church affiliation, alright? Now, it's very important that the Newton Cheer, which is probably the most well-known, if not the most important, certainly most popular university cheer in the world, or than among the very most, most popular, was established by a minister, a Reverend Lucas, a priest of a church, a priest. Alright. So, this is the European era. I had verbally told you about what happened in ancient Africa, okay? Now, but this is the Europeans building from that experience of the ancient Africans. So, so why, I mean, you know, why would I want the black church to support UPHF, Institute of Technology, the home of Gaga, okay? The UPHF, UPHF Institute, okay, Institute of Technology, Technology, okay, which is the home, okay, of Gaga, okay? And Gaga stands for God Almighty's, God, God Almighty's, okay? God Almighty's Grand Unified Theorem, Theorem, or another word for truth, which is the new discovery, okay? That is, this is Gaga. Okay? The reason Newton Cheer was important was his discovery of the universal, okay? He discovered the universal gravitational law, okay? Universal gravitational law, okay? Okay? And developed optics and calculus. Okay? Now.
That brought about what changes in the world?
Well, it taught Cambridge, not just on the map of top universities, but to be very top of the learning, you know? It explained the motions of the planets, the forces that govern the ocean, including the earth. That's what the universal gravitational law did. In the process, of course, it developed optics and calculus. Gaga, of course, between that and Gaga were Maxwell, even Poisson, and Albert Einstein and a few others, okay? Um, um, so, so just to, you know, make a, okay? Uh, Maxwell, okay, Maxwell, okay, did electromagnetic theory, electromagnetic force theory, electromagnet, magnetic, take, force, theory, okay? Alright? Uh, that's Maxwell, after Newton, okay? Newton did the first gravity, as this was shown here, that's Newton, gravity. Maxwell electromagnetic, then Einstein refined, okay, refined the gravity, the same thing that Newton worked on, gravity, okay? So, um, of course, he wanted to then unify the gravity, you know, that's number one, okay? Number two, he wanted to unify electromagnetic and gravity, okay? Uh, you know, wanted to unify, okay, uh, you know, gravity and electromagnetic, okay, yeah, alright? Now, that's what Albert Einstein wanted to, but they didn't finish that before he passed on, okay? But, you know, was, you know, was not, did not finish the job or did not succeed, okay? Did not, uh, you know, succeed or succeed. Did not succeed. Which left the problem of unification to the point where it became a very popular topic. So everybody had searched to find out how to unify that. Gaga unified those forces, okay? That's what Gaga did, right? Gaga, of course, unified, okay, all forces, okay? Not just, you know, the two, okay? Not just the two that he wanted to unify, nor, you know, it unified the four that are currently known and others that are not even known or thought about yet. That's what Gaga da, did. So Gaga unified Maxwell, Einstein, uh, uh, Newton and more. Okay, that's what Gaga had done. But, now, the universal gravitational law was funded by the church, alright? Now, so, so therefore, and other, and Einstein, you know, of course, had backing from, uh, you know, the synagogues and everything else, okay? But the schools that he was affiliated, even though they were European schools, those European schools, okay, were funded by the church, alright? So, you can say that every major research center or university in the world has its original funding from the church and religious institutions. That's the basis, okay, of my asking the religious institutions in the black community to fund Gaga, provide the funding for Gaga. That's the basis, because that's what had been done. And then it started by the same people, the same black people, you know, way back when, their ancestors started that reasoning, that, that process, that logical process of funding education from the church. Because the church can tell the people to contribute to a project.
Now, why should they in terms of the benefits that they weep and in terms of the culture and the dynamics of what they will, uh, uh, get out of their support?
That is correct. Uh, one of the jobs of the churches is to teach people how to glorify the Almighty God. You say prayers, you have respect for God and all that, but you also want God to look good. That's the basis of your faith, in this mosque or any religion. That praise for God in part is demonstrated in material things. Specifically, food items that people eat, okay, part of creation. You said you can't say so much too much on empty stock, days. Survivor becomes crisis. To cultivate food, to eat, to think and research. And universities are where that's done. Then, just to go to the church, the church has to know that for that to be possible, the universities, they put where their mouths is. They also want routes, so that people to get to church, to the congregation. The universities is where the research is done. And they have car, area that they need building the churches. Other of the expected building universities. They cement, plant there, in there. A stock on, where studied and taught out in universities. So, they also need those universities, that they could take out building, research buildings and the mosques.
Let me ask you, uh, many people say that we have thousands of universities that involve the technology, uh, that we need, finally we need specific, uh, black institutions, uh, to, uh, compete.
Okay, now, the other thing that the universities do for the church is also, uh, provide services. So that the pastor can stay well, preach to the people, okay? It's also done in the universities, the medical schools of the universities. So they definitely know, they got, provide funding to the universities. It's all that, great health, that can, those are the major, as I said. Um, but the health issues are a continuous thing. New diseases evolve, okay? And even the work that they know about already may not have a perfect solution. There is a need for continuous research, so the churches continue to fund that kind of research. The house need to be better, so they can, okay? The houses need to be built better. So the house you have is not the house that you have now, okay? So, those kind of things, one. Now, universal gravitational law discovery, put Europeans on the map, to the Asian people, on the map of Haitian, gave Cambridge its prominence. On that basis, Agar, God Almighty's Unified Theory, with a discovery that every other group of people, every other race would have loved to be, work on this thing, major milestone for black people. The cause of issue that was discovered by the black race. So that is a problem to end, between God on that level and the black people. Which says that the black people therefore must find a home for it. If God wanted all the race to be the discoverer, God would have chosen that. But God chose black people, therefore God says, "Black people, this is what I chose you to do. You got to find a home for it." And since the home is traditionally found by the churches and religious bodies, therefore the black churches and religious institutions are called to take on that task, task. That is how the black institutions are being called to take on the responsibility of providing the funding for the discovery called Gaga, which is the most sought, most popular research that the world has ever hoped for. Because of these big names that are associated with education, higher education and research. Newton, Maxwell, Einstein are associated with and wanted to discover Gaga. But they only did a partial, they were only successful partially, okay? There are currently four force fields that are known that are supposed to be, you know, that they're sorting, you know, the unification for. Newton was associated with one, Einstein was associated with the same one, Maxwell was associated with another one, electromagnetic, which is one, uh, one of the four. But Gaga unifies all four and more, okay? So therefore, Gaga, given the historical background, is supposed to be funded by the race where it came from, okay? And specifically a segment of that race that is supposed to be, is, you know, whose job it is to fund such institutions, which is the church and the mosques of religious institutions. That is why, you know, so therefore, that's why the call is or the responsibilities on the black church and the institutions. Because that is from history, their role, their responsibility.
Okay? Steel, uh, would you sit down, Professor?
Okay.
One moment.
Alright.
Uh, I, I, I still want you to elaborate further
Okay.
on why the parishioners, uh, should, uh, should support it, why the ministers support it. Uh, in terms of this new technology, new understanding
Yes.
that comes out of Gaga, how does it impact the world? How does it change the world as we now know it?
Well, uh, it changed the world tremendously. In that, whether we like it or not, whether we're religious or not, the process that goes on in the world occur by power that is beyond at least each individual power, okay? For example, no individual or collective power is able to change the fact about day and night, for example, okay? Uh, nor humans have ever, you know, been known to, uh, uh, actually, uh, you know, uh, change the life and death situation, you know, living and dying, okay, situation. There are things like that, so therefore, it is clear that there are forces that are beyond human forces that are responsible for a lot of things that goes on in, in the universe. Therefore, uh, of course, which is another reason why there is a need to continue to study, to learn and understand the dynamics of those forces, which is one of the things that Gaga deals with. In other words, to understand how this thing, why the night and day occurs, okay? Why the, uh, uh, the sun shines, why there are stars, why, you know, humans get sick, why we get AIDS, why we get cancer, or can we cure AIDS, can we cure cancer? Can we have a more efficient energy production systems, like cold fusion? Can we do that? Those are questions. But in the last five hundred years, the Europeans, because of Newton, if you want to just mention one name, and the knowledge base provided by Newton, Cambridge and the other universities, because of that knowledge that they have demonstrated, had propelled them, the Europeans, had propelled them, the Europeans, into a leadership position for the world because of the knowledge of the gravity, optics and calculus. That propelled the Europeans into a world leadership position. Because of that knowledge, they can provide food, healthcare, cars, and everything really, light and so on and so forth. Therefore, they automatically assume the role of leadership because the group that can provide that for the world is the leader, leading group, the leader group. That's the role that the Europeans have played since Newton. Gaga brings in what could be generally called a new era. Because now that responsibility is being shifted to the black race by God making a statement through Gaga, providing the black people with the theory of, understanding of the theory of everything, just like the universal gravitational law was provided to the Europeans five hundred years ago. So it's a change of role or a change in leadership, the leadership race. Therefore, what the Europeans did at the time, which is the churches pulling resources, monies together to build Cambridge, is now what the black race need to do to consummate that leadership, which they've been called upon to do by the forces that are bigger than humans. That's why the black people are now called upon to take on that role.